The hour of 6:30 having come and gone, I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, October 17th, 2023, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Martinez Rutherford, present. Alder Mayadze, present. Alder Rumel, present. Alder Slack, present. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere, present. Alder Vitavir, present. Alder Weheli, present. Alder Bennett is... Alder Conklin, present. President Curry, present. Alder Duncan, present. Alder Evers, present. Alder Field, present. Vice President Figaro Cole, present. Alder Govendurajin, present. Alder Harrington McKinney, present. Alder Knox, present. Alder Latimer Burris, present. Alder Madison, here. And Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Just as usual, I'll remind us that we're here to do the business of the residents of the City of Madison, and ask people to be kind and respectful in the process of doing so, and to refrain from using profanity on the floor. And perhaps I will add, given some of our previous conversations, to be mindful of the amount of time that we're taking. We have no honoring resolutions tonight, so are there any disclosures or recusals for items on tonight's agenda? Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to disclose for item 16 that I'm an employee of UW Madison, and that will not affect my vote on that item.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any additional disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Curry?
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except, one, items which have registrants wishing to speak; two, items which alders have separated out for discussion or debate purposes, as well as having some registered speakers. This document lists extra majority items, agenda items with recommendations different than the agenda, items for exclusion, and items introduced from the floor. Agenda items that are extra majority are Agenda Item Number 31, Legislative File Number 80039, amending the Police Department's operating budget and authorizing the Mayor and Chief of Police to accept a grant for leadership development and training. Agenda Item Number 37, Legislative File Number 80106, amending the 2023 adopted capital budget of the Economic Development Division and awarding public works contract 8595 Madison Public Market. Agenda Item Number 39, Legislative File Number 80130, amending the Community Development Authority's operating budget to finance a change order to the Triangle Redevelopment Master Plan from currently held redevelopment reserves. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda Item 28, Legislative File Number 80045, amending various sections of the Madison General Ordinance to remove minimum penalty amounts. Recommend to council with the recommended... Recommendation is to approve amending various section of the MGO to remove penalty amounts. Agenda Item Number 33, Legislative File Number 80082, authorizing the Community Development Authority to act as a master developer for the redevelopment of city-owned property on West Badger Road and Hughes Place, and to issue a development partnership request for qualification for the same. Recommended action is to return the lead. Agenda Item Number 35, Legislative File Number 80099, authorizing the purchase of the property located at 305 South Bedford from Dane County for future semblage with Brittingham Park. Recommended action is to adopt substitute. Agenda Item Number 57, Legislative File Number 80281, adopting an amendment to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan. The correct referral dates are Plan Commission, November 13th, and return to common council on November 21st. Agenda Item 58, Legislative File Number 80307, amending MAP in Section 28.071 Sub 2A related to downtown height limits of the MGO to update the downtown height map in Brayton Lot area. The referral dates for that will be Plan Commission of November 13th, returning to common council November 21st. Agenda Item Number 73, Legislative File Number 80321, adopting and confirming labor agreements between the city and the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees, Moving Picture Technicians, Artists and Allied Crafts of U.S. for the period of May 2nd, 2023 to December 31st, 2024. The correct referral dates are Finance Committee of October 23rd, removes referral to the October 19th Committee on Employee Relations, and returns to common council on November 7th. Agenda items excluded by, one, request of alders, or, two, speakers registered by 6:30 on October 17th. Agenda Item Number Two, Legislative File Number 79524, creating Section 28.02200627 of the MGO to change zoning at property located at 6853 McKee Road from Plan Development District to Plan Development Specific Implementation Plan District. Speakers are registered. Agenda Item Number 29, Legislative File Number 79974, amending Section 2.13 of the MGO to reduce the time allotted to each alder for discussion and debate, requested for exclusion by Alder Weheli. Agenda Item Number 37, Legislative File Number 80106, amending the 2023 adopted capital budget of the Economic Development Division and awarding public works contract. We have speakers registered. Agenda Item Number 46, Legislative File Number 79532, repealing Section 24.12 of the MGO and amending Section 1.08 Sub 3 of the MGO to remove associated references, requested for exclusion by Alder Weheli. Agenda Item Number 51, Legislative File 79865, amending sections of the MGO to transfer parking enforcement and supervision from Madison Police Department to Madison Department Transportation's Parking Division, also requested for exclusion by Alder Weheli. Items introduced from the floor are Legislative File Number 80421, authorizing a contract between the State of Wisconsin Department of Military Affairs, Division of Emergency Management for the City of Madison Fire Department to provide regional hazardous material response system services. Introduced by Alder Field to be referred to Finance Committee meeting of October 23rd, 2023, returning to common council on November 7th, 2023. And Legislative File Number 80423, authorizing the inclusion of a land use restriction agreement as an exhibit to the purchase and sale agreement between Core Spaces and the City of Madison for acquisition of a property located at 405 West Gorm Street, introduced by Alders Revere and Govendurajin to be referred to Finance of October 23rd, 2023, Plan Commission, November 13th, 2023, and Common Council, November 21st, 2023.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other items that alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none. Let me run through that again. Just a note that we have three extra majority items, 31, 37, and 39. The following items have recommendations that are different from what's printed on the agenda. Item 28 has additional recommendations, but the recommendation is approval. Item 33, the recommendation is approval. Item 35, the recommendation is to adopt the substitute. Item 57, there's a correction to referral dates, and as there is on Item 73. And then the following items will be excluded... Excuse me, we have two introductions from the floor, which you just heard, and the following items will be excluded, Items 2, 29, 37, 46, and 51. Anything else on the consent agenda? Not President Curry a motion?
Moved to adopt consent.
Second, moved in second to adopt the consent agenda. There, Alder Rumel?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to be registered as voting no on Item Number 45, Legistar 79337, the CSM for 3100 East Washington.
We'll make that note. The clerk will have that. Then, on the consent agenda, with that exception, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the recommendations? Seeing no objection, the consent agenda is adopted. We'll go on to public comment. Our first public comment is on Item 2. This is Legistar 79524, creating sections of the Madison General Ordinance to change zoning at 6853 McKee Road. Our first registrant is Roman Ryan of District 12, to be followed by Bradley Conning. Roman? Either side?
Thank you to the common council and the mayor for having us here tonight. We're three years into this, for a variety of reasons, different land pieces didn't work out, and so on and so forth. Again, my name is Roman Ryan. I represent Ryan Funeral Homes in Madison. My grandpa Paul started the funeral home in 1938 in downtown Madison on King Street with his 10 soldiers, 10 kids that he had in Manona. I followed my grandpa, and my father did as well, so I'm the third-generation funeral director with Ryan Funeral Homes. And I'm happy to say my son Casey is on board and secure the fourth generation, going on 85 years of service to the Madison community and the outlying areas. The objective of what we're doing is we have a funeral home on Ordana Road at the current time that we bought from the Joyce family in the year 2000, and it was never something we liked, but it was a chance to expand. The building did not meet what we wanted. We fixed it up within a month of buying it. It's got stairs coming in the front door. It's just got a lot of, just a lot of bad things that we don't want. So our idea is to build a new funeral home on McKee Road that will represent a funeral home that Dane County has really never seen. We will have a very spacious chapel to large funerals we can handle, and a community room that can seat over 125 people. And that could be in conjunction with the funeral. It could be people who wanted to use it in the neighborhood to have luncheons, or get-togethers, or meetings, or voting. It's unlimited. It's more of a... It's a funeral home, don't get me wrong, but it's also an event center. And that's kind of where funeral homes are heading in this modern age, with the rise of cremation and less funerals. I think there's a couple more slides there. If somebody does that, I don't know. Yeah, and again, the reasons that we're doing this, and we want to provide Madison, and we want to stay in Madison. We don't want to go to Pittsburgh. We have one in Verona, and we have one in DeForest, but we want to keep the West Side presence that we have already, and take care of these families with a facility that will give them a much more better experience with the, just the beauty of the area, and the beauty of the rooms, and the size of the community center. Anybody have any questions for me, or...
We'll do questions in a moment. We have another registrant.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
Our next registrant is Bradley Conning of Middleton from Sketchworks Architecture. So if you say it into the...
If you could skip ahead to the site plan, please. So Brad Conning with Sketchworks Architecture. So as Roman pointed out, this facility will be kind of unlike any other funeral home with the fact that it's not doing cremation, and it's not doing any kind of embalming. That is all handled out at their other Sherman Avenue location. So there's no environmental impact. It's really just a center for events, in case funerals or neighborhood events that may be possible. We've talked about that with Alder Weheli as well, and the neighborhood. Site plan, so the, some of the comments that we've received, there's been 10 emails, I believe, that we've received, or actually 12. 10 have been in opposition, and in some of those oppositions, we just wanted to talk real briefly about how we're addressing those items. So some of the, the majority of the comments have been about traffic. They've been about green space and the use of the building itself. So there's been a lot of misconceptions about just kind of what the use was. There's been a lot of misconceptions about, you know, cremation and, you know, preparation of bodies. So the site plan that you see, the building is focused to the north, which is along McKee Road. The exit is actually on Mater Drive, and it will use Golden Copper to the west, which is a private road for this entire development. We did have city engineering at the neighborhood meeting that we held, and I believe they appropriately mentioned that McKee Road has been designed for not only this project, potential, the apartment building that may be on the site adjacent, as well as just the general traffic that we're seeing, you know, from Epic and from Verona. I also am a District 7 resident and live not too far from this project. The setbacks are pretty plentiful. So from Copper, Golden Copper Street, we have approximately a 30-foot setback, which in working with the UDC and with our landscape engineer, this project is heavily landscaped. It's almost four times the amount of landscape that you would typically see or that it's required. And we've worked with UDC, we've worked with Jessica Vaughn... And we've worked with UDC, we've worked with Jessica Vaughn, to make sure that the visual from the west, the apartments from the west, are properly blocked with dense shrubbery.
About 30 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. And so we've really tried to make sure the setbacks and the green space are there and address as many comments as we're able to from the neighborhood outside of the use, which is an approved use per the GDP that was approved in February. We're available for any questions?
Thank you. Questions on item 2, Alder Ohealy?
Can you let Brad finish up his presentation, please? Just some of the thoughts.
The only thing, other thing that I was going to mention is that we do have a UDC, we have gained initial approval at the September 18th, or yeah, September 18th Plan Commission was unanimously approved. And in the, we did gain initial approval by UDC on September 9th. If you can skip ahead to the renderings, I'm sorry, skip ahead to the renderings at the end of the presentation. Just real briefly, I'll kind of talk right there, that's fine. Just briefly talk about just the changes and the suggestions that UDC has had at the initial approval process. One of the comments has been the stacking of the windows from the first to the second floor. And what we've done, this is the submittal that we've sent in for the final UDC meeting on November 1st. We have added the horizontal ban to kind of disassociate both of, from the first and second floor windows. And in talking with Jessica Vaughn, the UDC, she felt that that was in step in the right direction from the comments that she had heard in our initial approval. And then we also focused the stone on the building to the main gable entries, and kind of limited the stone that we had shown before between the windows. So kind of consolidating the stone, disassociating the second floor from the first floor windows, and then really trying to create, you know, this mountain-style architecture that the Ryans want to portray in this, in this design. So I feel we've kind of addressed all the items that the UDC has appropriately identified in their initial approval, and we look forward to having that final UDC meeting on November 1st.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the speakers on this item? Alder Ohealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Brad, and thank you, Ryan, for being here this evening. My question is, based on the urban, you know, the Plan Commission, if you can talk about more about the two-story building and how the recommendation was more specifically a two-story, but what you're recommending is semi-two-story. And also, the Plan Commission approved only 10,000 square feet, and you're going a little bit over than 10,000. So can you talk about the reason why?
Sure. Yes. So initially, in the February 7th Plan Commission meeting for the GDP, which was approved, there was a comment or additional comments from the Plan Commission about it being a two-story structure. Obviously, the Ryans and a funeral home in general is a one-story kind of use. There really isn't any need for a two-story application for a typical funeral home. But because of the Plan Commission's desire for a two-story building, we've got focus to that two-story on the corner of Golden Copper and McKee Road, as noted in the meeting minutes from the Plan Commission. That second story is just under 3,000 square feet. And then we have a large kind of two-story lobby, which is the two main gables cross axes from the project. And then the chapel, because we need, or the desire is to have a tall ceiling height that's coffered, that doesn't allow us necessarily to build a second story over that. So in talking with the city, with staff, and then ultimately the approval by Plan Commission, that was on September 18th, everyone agreed that the 3,000 square feet that we were providing on a second story was acceptable, and per, you know, City of Madison guidelines.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you. And we will go on to our next item, which is Agenda item 37, amending the Economic Development Division adopted capital budget and awarding Public Works Contract 8595 for the Madison Public Market. And item 37, our first registrant is James Shulkin of District 11, representing the Madison Public Market Foundation, to be followed by Josie Chu, to be followed by Adam Hain. We have James.
My name is James Shulkin. I'm a board member of the Madison Public Market Foundation. On behalf of the foundation, I wish to thank all council members and Mayor Rhodes Conway for the time you've invested in this project and for your efforts to learn as much as possible about the current situation. We also wish to specifically thank Alders Vitterver, Madison, Latimer Burris, and Rummel for their efforts to keep the dream of the public market alive. We hope that all council members see the exceptional value that the market will have for our community. The core mission of the market is equity-based economic development. It will lower barriers to entry and create a supportive environment for diverse entrepreneurs hoping to launch a new business or grow an existing one. The market will become an inviting community space filled with food, art, and entertainment, a beloved destination for residents and visitors alike. In the last two years, more than 235 businesses have completed vendor interest forms, hoping for a place in the market. 68% identified as women-owned, 15% as African-American, 18% as Asian, and 15% as Hispanic. The city has promised five minority-owned market-ready businesses a place in the market. There is tremendous excitement within the community for the market. Market's Facebook page has 5,500 followers, and the Instagram page has 4,700 followers. More than 1,000 visitors attended the Ready Set Market event held at the Fleet Building on September 12th. The market's economic and social benefit to the city is substantial. The business plan states that annual revenue for the market vendors is $16 million, and that annual spin-off value in the community beyond the market is estimated at $20 million. We have come to this point in time after a two-year COVID pandemic delay and the pressing need to house the homeless at the Fleet Building. Inflationary changes in construction have caused this shortfall, and the project is again on the precipice. We are so close. An operating agreement and lease have both been approved by the council, and the signed package is approved. On behalf of the foundation, we ask you to not let this important and valued project fall by the wayside. Thank you all for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Josie Chu of Sun Prairie, to be followed by Adam Hain, to be followed by Judy McNeil.
Okay. Can I start? Yes. So I'd like to start out by thanking the leadership for giving me the opportunity to speak. I also like to start out with a short story. Both my maternal and paternal grandmother lost their husband. So my grandfather was, you know, imprisoned in a Japanese occupation. My grandmother had to raise their children from nothing. One grandmother would make steamed ham pie, and she would bring it down to bus stations, mall, or just downstairs by the crowded residential area to sell them. And she would sell each piece for a quarter. When the police or the health inspector were on their way, friendly customers would actually call out to her to run. And she would call all her staff, and she would run. So the other grandmother would just, not just care for dogs, but she's actually a housekeeper for an English person, Englishman who's a lawyer. And she would do the dishes, coax, and do all the laundry. All that said, both my grandmothers taught me how to cook, and they took the time to write the recipes down. They have a dream. Their dream may be small, but their dream was to provide and care for their sons and daughters. Their dream was to ensure that their sons and daughters are educated and have a future. I'm here today in support of the public market, the Madison public market. Please vote yes to either resolutions. I'm not here to address the issue of diversity, equity, or inclusivity. I don't know how to pronounce that, but I know how to spell that. These words do not carry weight if they are not practiced by us. I was told by my nursing manager to not talk about Madame Chu, or how Madame Chu got started. No one is interested, according to her, and no one wants, no, absolutely not. I'm here to say that we all have a dream. We were told to chase our dream. I told my son to chase his dream, and I'm here at the age of 57 years old, still chasing this dream. There is no guidebooks that tell us, oh, we will be going back to the committee, to the council, for additional funding, or, you know, to make a decision on either vote of the resolution. The pandemic is not foreseeable. The cost of material increase cannot be predicted. But lastly, I have to tell you that we have been through this road before, not one time. Thank you for giving us a home. But at the same time, I told my son, I'm not your friend, I'm your mother, and that means I'm strict with you to help you be successful. I made a promise to you to provide for you, and to care for you, and to keep you safe. The leadership here today, you are our leader. May not be our friend, but you are our leader. You are here to speak for the people, you are here to take care of your constituents, and you have a promise to keep.
That's your time.
You supported... Pardon me?
That's your time.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
Finish, you want to finish your sentence?
Oh, I can?
Yeah.
So my last sentence is, you want us to be successful? Please keep us safe, help us close the gap, and don't make me chase after the dream. Let me catch the dream for once. Let me catch that dream. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm too old to run.
Amen.
Our next registrant is Adam Hain of District 17, representing the Public Market Foundation Board, to be followed by Judy McNeil, to be followed by Karen Crossley. Adam?
Hello, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm Adam Hain. I am on the Market Foundation Board, and I have been a technical advisor to the city about the public market for, I believe, nine years now. I am not seeing my video, so I'm sorry if that's not working right. But anyway, I worked with the Market Ready Program, helping to interview all of the candidates for that, spending months with them, hearing their stories, working with them, and working with many other people in the community that have started food businesses. Previously, I ran Feed Kitchen, so I've worked with over 100 businesses, starting and growing their food businesses. Madison needs more opportunities for small and emerging food businesses, and the public market is a fantastic place for that. One of the biggest things I heard from so many of these food businesses was that they are working two, three, four jobs just to survive, to be able to go, and their dream is to be able to have a business that can support them, not just as a hobby, but as an actual business, and have a place that they can do that. To be able to have these businesses that are, very many minority, women, first- or second-generation immigrant-owned, come in and have a fantastic space that is properly equipped, well-run, and a launching space for them to be able to come in, start that business, show the community what they have, and then possibly move on to bigger and better things, or be able to remain there and collaborate with other people, finding more and more opportunities is what we really, really need in Madison. Funding this project will be a huge boon for the community and for all of these small businesses, and many more to come down the line. So I really encourage you, please, for the health of the Madison food community, and just for the opportunities that it presents, to bring this to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Judy McNeil of District 14, to be followed by Karen Crossley, to be followed by Alex Saludos. Judy? Do we have Judy online?
Mayor, there's no person in attendance by that name.
Thank you. We'll move on then to Karen Crossley of District 6, to be followed by Alex Saludos.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Common Council. I'm Karen Crossley, and I'm currently serving as the president of the Madison Public Market Foundation Board. And I'm here this evening expressing strong and enthusiastic support of the Madison Public Market. It's hard for me to think of a recent project in Madison that has garnered so much deep and broad support from all sectors of our community, support that has been sustained for and spanned nearly two decades, as illustrated by over 5,000 people expressing their interest and support via the Madison Public Market Foundation's website, and over 1,000 excited guests joining us at the market's future home at an open house event the foundation hosted last month. Wow. So when I think about and imagine the Madison Public Market, what comes to my mind? Vibrancy, energy, entrepreneurship, innovation, economic development, and wealth creation, creativity, delicious food, and distinctive local artisan goods, and rich cultural expression, connections, discovery, and well-being. A year-round, warm, and welcoming gathering place for one and all. And may I remind you that the Madison Public Market was shovel-ready, as they say. In 2020, however, the pandemic created a lengthy pause, and like so many other construction projects near and far, regrettably resulted in escalated construction costs that we now must address. The City of Madison and the Madison Public Market Foundation, benefiting from abundant community engagement, have worked closely together to refine the shared vision for the Madison Public Market. We feel confident in our ability to deliver on the promise of equity through entrepreneurship. For example, over 50% of the 200-some businesses that have expressed interest in being a part of the market are owned by people of color, women, and recent immigrants. The public market offers access and opportunities for visionary entrepreneurs who historically may have faced barriers to entry and participation. And we know from peer public markets across the country that the success of our vendors will lead to the market's success. The Madison Public Market will offer space for 30 permanent vendors, including several anchor tenants, along with over 100 other episodic vendors throughout the year. Over 500,000 visitors each year will enjoy discovering the varied food products and wares presented by our outstanding local vendors, and enjoy an ever-changing, dynamic landscape at the public market. I envision the Madison Public Market as an iconic, one-of-a-kind, extraordinary destination, bringing value to our city, county, and region.
That's your time.
Can I just, I look forward to welcoming you to the market's grand opening in early 2025. Thanks for your consideration. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Our last registrant wishing to speak on this item is Alex Saludos of District 5.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start, I just want to thank everybody that's worked so hard on this. It's, we need it. You have a crucial decision regarding the long-awaited public market before you. Resolutions before you tonight would add up to $2.28 million in new borrowing. With your approval, the total cost could reach a staggering $24.2 million, which doesn't include the interest on the bonds used to pay for the market. All of this, however, comes without any revenue. This is an opportunity to reconsider the design and transform it into a mixed-use development, a change that will substantially benefit the city's finances. The current plan is to rehab a one-story, 45,000-square-foot commercial garage on a spacious 3.37-acre site in a TOD zoning district into the public market. While the public market is without question appealing, the benefits of a mixed-use project can't be ignored. Here's why you should reject the additional funding and support redesign. We have a housing shortage. Reimagining the market as a mixed-use development would add 290,000 housing units to address this issue head-on. A mixed-use project generates substantial economic gains. The sale of development rights could bring an immediate infusion of approximately $6 million. Additional property tax revenues over the next 50 years would total $86.8 million. $33.6 million would go to the city, which could help pay for the market. $39 million would benefit the school district. $39 million would benefit the school district. The current plan underutilizes the site. It is contrary to the city's goals and transit overlay district zoning. A mixed-use project aligns with these objectives and creates a dynamic place that encourages transit use. Rather than increasing funding for a proposal that may not fully meet the city's needs, it's more judicious to redirect these resources towards a project that delivers on multiple fronts, including housing, economic growth, and urban development. A mixed-use development is more sustainable in the long term. It encourages efficient land use and reduces transportation needs. It aligns with Madison's commitment to environmental stewardship and urban planning principles. To transform the public market project into a successful mixed-use development, the city should issue a RFP to developers. It allows them to submit innovative plans that maximize the potential of the site while meeting the city's goals. It encourages competition and ensures the chosen proposal aligns with the city's vision. Let's seize the opportunity to reshape our future. By rejecting the additional funding for the current proposal and supporting its redesign as a mixed-use project, we can address critical issues such as housing, stimulate economic growth.
That's your time.
Create more sustainable, vibrant city for generations to come. Let's think about the big picture. That's your job. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. We have no more registrants wishing to speak on this item. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions just for two registered speakers and someone registered to speak but didn't speak tonight, but here for questions. So the first one, if someone from the foundation can speak to the number of jobs created? That's the one thing I was looking for and didn't hear.
I'll answer it as best I can, and I'll get to the paragraph that I didn't have time to share. So, the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis generated the following impact data related to the Madison Public Market: 16 to 20 million in annual sales, at least 35 new businesses launched, 100 jobs in the market, and 265 regional jobs created, 22 million in regional impact, and 200 million in redevelopment potential in the immediate area. Sounds to me like our investment now yields an impressive return for years to come.
Thank you. And then, either for Madam Chu, or I know I see Carmel Jackson. I didn't see her registered to speak. But if someone could just speak to the, if you're willing to, to speak to the financial impact on your family, should the market exist?
I'm Carmel Jackson, owner of Mellie Mel's Soul Food. The impact is what I brought with me. My daughter, right there, and my family, generational wealth to go through. My family, through my daughter, my youngest daughter, to my granddaughter, who works for me, who's 16. Even the two-and-a-half-year-old, she's starting to clean greens. But, you know, the impact on my family, not just my immediate, my nephews, my nieces, kids I taught in the Madison School District, the homeless kids, that see me, and they kind of flock to me because I like to talk. But the, they're watching. They're watching all of this. You know, we watched Ms. Carmel. She used to teach us, and then she stopped. And now she's selling food. And now she's had a restaurant, then lost a restaurant. Well, not lost it, but got sick. And now she's here. You get knocked down. We show these kids, you know, your dream. Just keep going with it. I've been, y'all ain't getting no younger. It's just a struggle to keep hearing this. And I keep telling Ciara, you know, I'm training you to take over. I'm training you to do this. You know, LaMaya, you're going to work for Grandma here. You know, my oldest daughter, she's in a different field, but she's willing to go on and help me build and grow. You know, it's a big impact, just not on me, my family, my kids, my 14 grandchildren. But all the people who watch me through Madison, from the time I taught in the Madison School District to when I was a kid at Lowell School, you know, some of the teachers, they watch me grow, and they say, oh, Mellie, I saw you on TV. Remember when you were in my class? Or, oh, Ms. Jackson, you know, you're doing this, oh, I'm so proud, you know? And people are watching, but they're not watching us go anywhere. We seem to be hyping us up. Oh, we're all hyped. Yeah, I'm ready, uh-huh, it's going to come. You know, it's time. It's time to bring us all together, stop talking about it and be about it. There's funds out there, there's monies out there. They're used for other things. That's important to me, as well as the other stuff we all use money for. But that's my family, that's my, my community. Those are my grandchildren. And that's that impact. And it's going to hit everybody because my family, very diverse. And they're in different parts of Madison. Caddis Grove, you know, they're everywhere, and they're watching. You know, kids that call me mom that aren't even related. So, you know, hey, Mom, hey, Mom, where's the public market? If I could walk in a store one day and somebody said, I thought y'all were going to start that public market. So did I. You know, but, you know, come on, I just think, we waited and I paid my dues. I've been in this Market Ready program from the beginning, and I don't even know what that date was. But it's like, every time you hype us up, the news come, oh, you know, Mellie, what do you think? What are your hopes? You know, I'm tired of answering that question over and over again. Because to me, the dream is, it gets a little foggy.
Yeah.
So I just, you know, we need your support. We need, our kids need our support, especially these young kids coming up. Not just mine, but yours, your neighbors, your grandchildren. Everybody is watching. And they're watching it come up and prove it's gone. So let's work on the people.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carmella, I don't believe you were registered. So can you just make sure that the clerk has your information so that we can write, write over here?
Oh, yeah. Should I fill out something?
Yeah, we just need you to get registered, or maybe Karen can help you register online.
Okay.
Thank you.
And my last question, if Javier, I believe it's Acevedo, is available? If not, no worries.
I don't see him, Alder.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alder Viterver, we have a number of Alders with questions. Alder Viterver. If Karen could come back, please. And you might want to stay up there, I'm guessing. You might, you might need your notes.
So we heard from Mr. Saludos, and frankly, we've heard from others that have said that we should reject this funding and go back to the drawing board. The site's not right, et cetera, in spite of this being a multi, multi-year endeavor. Can you just tell the council, if this is rejected tonight, what will happen?
I'm looking to Matt, my colleague in the city, too. But, I mean, my understanding is the project's dead. And I say that with great sadness. But Matt, can you help out? If that's an inadequate or inaccurate response?
The council will have a chance to ask staff questions later.
Okay. All right. It's my best. Am I good now? Thank you.
But, but hold on, there's a number of other Alders in the queue. Alder Bahilahe, is there a question for Karen?
Yeah, thanks, Karen.
Go ahead, Alder.
So, first question is, the philanthropic community in Madison are so generous. Why there hasn't been such interest in this project?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? Something about the philanthropic community?
Yes. Are very generous in Madison. I come from a nonprofit fundraiser. And, you know, this has gone too long with less, you know, from the philanthropic community. So can you talk about if there's any challenges or why there's a gap from the, this particular philanthropic community to support the public market?
Okay. So the Madison Public Market Foundation was charged with helping to raise the private support. We fulfilled that commitment with over $3 million. And so the reason why I think we're in this position is that the construction bids came back higher than we anticipated. And so now we're trying to figure out how to address that gap. If there's someone in the philanthropic community who thinks they might be capable of filling the gap, we'd be excited to hear about them. But at this point, it doesn't seem that the local philanthropic community is in the position to address the construction bid funding gap.
Yes, and as a follow-up, what you're saying is, based on what was charged with the, the Market Foundation, you have reached your target fundraising to continue with the project?
That's correct. I mean, the, the budget includes the commitment that the foundation agreed to fulfill.
Thank you.
Alder Harrington McKinney, is it for Karen?
Thank you answered it, but just let me hear it again. The amount that the foundation has raised so far, could you state what that is again?
Yeah, we fulfilled the commitment of over $3 million. And that's, I'm trying to think about the number of donors. I mean, the gifts range from probably a couple dollars to 1.5 million. So it's several hundred donors who compose that collection of givers.
Good, I thought that that was your answer. And the commitment was for the foundation to raise that amount of money. This moves forward, will the foundation continue to strive? And is there a plan that's in place for you to continue? When I say you, you know that I'm saying foundation, the foundation to continue to raise?
Sure. I mean, we, we won't stop. Right now, we are looking to help support our vendors, for example, in addressing startup costs. And, I mean, we're working on the Ready, Set, Market campaign right now that will go to year end. So we welcome continued support from the community and are continuing to put that opportunity out there for members of our community.
My final question is that I spend a lot of time on the computer looking at successful markets, and I know absolutely what it can do. So my, my turnaround question for you is in that marketing campaign that's going out, and know the Market Ready have set in that space, those anchors, those, and I think it was 30 vendors and tenants who have committed, could you say a little bit more about those kinds of commitments? Who's going to be in the space?
Yeah, the vendors have been, have not been selected other than the first five who were awarded grants, startup grants. We're looking at one of them over there. Congratulations, Carmella. And so assuming or hoping that the project advances, we will look to hire our first staff person, the executive director and their team. And while we're trying to ready the landscape for the vendor selection, we will not be, as the foundation board, undertaking that initiative. And we will, we will be working with the staff to make that happen. So we have on our website a vendor interest form. As James mentioned, I think over 200 vendors have indicated interest in participating and vending in the market. So we're trying to work with them, to prepare them for the time when the selection process will take place with selection criteria and so forth. But we will be delegating and deputizing the staff, the executive director and their team, to actually work on that during the construction.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you very much.
All right. Alder Knox, is it for Karen? You're muted, Alder.
James?
Yeah, I have some questions for Karen. First of all, Karen, just want to thank you for your leadership. You know, I'm familiar with your expertise, and I just appreciate your contributions. I have one question that's similar to the other, but you mentioned you, your goal was to raise over $3 million. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So just in your opinion, I mean, knowing this community, how generous it is, do you consider that goal adequate? Or were you anticipating, you know, much more in private donations?
Well, that goal was targeted quite a few years ago. And we feel proud that we fulfilled it and grateful to the community for coming forward. It's been challenging. I, I've got to acknowledge that, given that the market has had many bumps and stops and starts along the way. And so we've had many givers and potential givers who've stuck with us and have chosen to commit their, their gifts. But it has been challenging. So I guess, is it adequate? I mean, one would always wish for more, probably. But we're proud and grateful.
Okay. You heard the gentleman that talked about the mixed-use development. Was there any consideration of some type of mixed-use development where there might be, the city might be able to, to get additional revenues? Or is that not a topic that you guys were charged with or ever discussed?
Yeah, the, the Public Market Foundation didn't have a role in those early days. I mean, other than the business plan, but it always has focused on a public market and not a mixed-use-type development. So I don't feel well-positioned to respond to that question. It, it has not been in our purview.
Okay. And Madam Mayor, I guess I would, at some point, like to talk to the gentleman that raised that intriguing question.
Yes, Alder, I'll put you back in the queue for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Mianze, questions for Karen or somebody else?
Yes. I guess one of my questions has been answered, but in order to frame this question, I guess, you know, this is a home for mostly homeless people. And also, east to west has a lot of ridership. Can you just touch on, just a quick second, about how this might be the, I've heard a lot of questions about this might not be a good location. Can you touch on this might be the prime location for the, for the market?
Is it, is it acceptable that I invite James to help me here?
Absolutely, yes.
James, pick that one, please.
Thank you.
I love the way you delegate.
Yes, she's the president. I'm, I'm a spokesperson. I left my notes back there. But, you know, I, there is a lot of talk about relitigating this decision about where this market is. From a foundation standpoint, we love this location. We think it's fantastic. The building itself is a tremendous opportunity to create a market in a building that essentially exists already. And to, to make this kind of a, a start from anew would cost two or three or four times the amount of money that, that would cost to renovate the Fleet Building. We love the location because it's next to Burj Jones Field. It's an opportunity for us to have festivals and food carts. The property itself is large enough for us to accommodate vendors outside the building, all around the building in the summertime, in a nice, nice summer days,[1675.84] all around the building, in the summertime, in a nice summer days, springtime and fall. It's surrounded with people selling landscaping. It's close to a neighborhood, lots of neighborhoods. My experience with public markets are the ones that are most successful are the ones that are located inside neighborhoods, because it's in walking distance to people that who want to come there for a cup of coffee, buy fruits and vegetables, come out for a nice fun evening, buying food from the food carts or the vendors inside. We're close to the Sassy neighborhood, we're at the far end of the Capital East District, which is growing by leaps and bounds in terms of the number of people moving into that neighborhood through new construction. We have support of the Atwood neighborhood, we have support of the Northside Planning Council. Everybody's really very excited about this neighborhood. Also, access is available by the bike path, by public transportation. It'll be on the location of a BRT stop, and we think it's really just a fantastic opportunity. The site was chosen by a consulting group called the Project for Public Spaces, which is an internationally renowned consulting group, working on placemaking for all kinds of public structures. And they chose this location over the south side, over the north side. They thought this offered the best mix of people who live close by, within a five to 10-mile radius, that would support the vendors in the most economic way, to make it most successful, and also address the food scarcity within that region. So we think it's a fantastic opportunity. And the way the east side has been growing lately, it really lends itself to what's now developing as a arts and entertainment corridor from throughout the Capital East District, from the Capitol Square all the way down to First Street, with My Arts and with YSO and Sylvie and everything else that's happening in that corridor, hotels, restaurants, and housing. So we love it. We think it's a great location.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris, is it questions for the foundation?
Sure.
It really was for Karen, but I'm sure that you can answer either or. I wanted you guys to talk a little bit about how, having all this debate and narrowing all these decisions over the past, I think, 15 years roughly, has impacted your ability to properly fundraise, because it's always uncertain if this is ever going to happen. So can you help us feel that and understand that?
Sure, that is very true. This has really been a roller coaster ride for everybody involved, especially the foundation. And I'm on the fundraising committee as well. And we have meetings and then we don't have meetings. We have meetings and we don't have meetings, because we can't keep going out to the philanthropic community and say, well, we think it's going to happen this time. And then, you know, where do we go now if it doesn't happen? We give money back? And, you know, that's just the wrong message. You know, we were very fortunate that True Stage came through with a very large donation, True Stage Market Ready Hall. And that really shows there's support from the business community as well. But at this point, we can't keep asking for money when we don't know that it's going to happen. And so it's almost embarrassing, at this point, to go out and try and raise money when you really can't. We've been getting a lot of support from the public, you know, as Karen said, small donations. And from within the board itself, we've given ourselves a lot of money as well. But it's really, until we are established and break ground, then we can go out and we can ask for funds that aren't related to construction, they're related to programming and related to supporting the vendors through the build-out that we really need to have. The more we have for build-out, the more we honor our mission of helping entrepreneurs of color and women get started. And we can't do that until we really have broken ground and ready to go. Thank you.
Also, so you, in a nutshell, you're saying, also, if we could just get going on it, then you would be able, you're confident that more people will become confident in it and want to participate in what is, over time, should carry itself and generate a lot of dollars for Madison community in code dollars, is that correct?
Absolutely. And also, we can start pursuing grants as well, that would fund, you know, the arts, entertainment and business startup too. We can't do that until we get started.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field, is it questions for the foundation? No. Alder Rommel, is it questions for the foundation? Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. Come on. Thank you both for being here and being so well-prepared and for the years that you've worked on this. It occurs to me that the difference between the version one and version two is kind of a lot about, like, what about those windows and doors? Can you just talk to us how the foundation worked with staff, how you decided to value engineer this when it was going, before it went out to bid, and kind of what you, you know, thought was doable versus, you know, what you could live with?
Well, we've been really appreciative of our staff colleagues, so I'll make sure to publicly acknowledge their incredible commitment and work with us and support. Anticipating that the construction bids may come in high, knowing the state of the world and just about every other construction project out there, our city colleagues invited the foundation to imagine some scenarios that could require some cutting back to see what we could do. And so we worked with a lot of different lines in the budget, FFE, furnishings, fixtures and equipment, these garage doors that we keep talking about throughout the facility, the windows in True Stage Market Ready Hall, or what sometimes has been referred to as South Hall, some other tech kinds of things. I mean, there's a whole collection of lines in the budget that the foundation considered and tried to prioritize. The garage doors and the windows, in my opinion, would ultimately be desirable to invest in improving them and really creating a showcase market, something that we are truly proud of. So in a perfect world, we would wish for all of those elements that have been shaved out through these ad alternates and other scenarios. I mean, our wish would be that they would all be funded, but we would happily live with a resolution to advance the project if some of those had to go by the wayside. So we're appreciative of the creativity among you and the two different resolutions to try to figure out a path forward.
One follow-up question is the furniture fixtures and equipment line item, when the staff shared with the council, you know, the bid one and two, and then that item with those things, that seems to me like what's going to make our vendors, like, you know, like, really look great. So that was a cut too, but there still is money. Can you just tell us what's still there and how we can kind of help get those numbers back up to make sure that you're ready to go?
Well, my understanding is that the difference between the two amendments is really just the cost of the windows in the South Hall and True Stage Market Ready Hall and the garage doors in that same part of the facility. The rest of the money is that we gave back, the $1.2 million to try and make this work, really refers to the furnitures, fixtures and equipment, but also, I think there was $400,000 of that that was identified at the time for improvements to the facility specific to the vendors, to build out for the vendors. So that's the money that's missing, and I believe that's the money that we hope to instead get from the county, to help make up that $1.2 million. So the amendments that you're considering are really just about those two physical structure items that are important to the market in the overall look of the market. Those are in the True Stage Market Ready Hall, but it's important to remember that part of our economics for this project is to use that space for special events. So if it doesn't look right, doesn't look very good, the windows aren't bright and shiny like the rest of the building, and the garage door doesn't work very well, or doesn't have the windows in it, it's a less appealing space.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, is it for these folks again?
Yes, just a follow-up question. In my reading about the public markets, I read a section that says it's not about the building, but the people. And thank you for sharing the pieces for the aesthetics. And so am I hearing you correct that you want to be shovel-ready and move this project forward? And the furnishing, when I say furnishings, I'm specifically talking about the building, the doors and the windows. Would it be safe to say that it is about the people rather than the building, but you'd be able to move forward if those two items were set aside? Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right. Any other questions for these folks? Seeing none, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll come back to Alder Knox, who I believe had questions for Mr. Slutus.
Yeah, just a brief question.
Go ahead, Alder.
Yes, you were talking about a mixed-use project in that location. Were you speaking in terms of something that would be inclusive of a public market, or were you just talking about as opposed to the public market?
Oh, absolutely, inclusive. That would be, a mixed-use developer would love to have the public market as an anchor tenant, because the value, finding a commercial tenant that draws people, you know, and makes the space desirable, is a huge asset.
Can you speak into the mic so he can hear you?
Absolutely. It would include the public market, because that's a very desirable tenant feature. It makes it more, much more valuable. It helps them lease other commercial space. You know, the footprint of that site would accommodate such a dramatically larger building, you could have other commercial space there. And having that anchor tenant helps the viability of it and the vitality of it by getting other tenants. I've talked to two very large developers who are both, you know, if the city is willing, they'd be surprised if the city changed course at this point, but they're like, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we still have Susan Schmitz?
Go ahead, Alder.
Hi, Susan. I wanted to ask you about the letter that you wrote to the Alders about your involvement in the early work on the Madison public market concept. You mentioned that you worked with the International Downtown Association to look at comparable and successful public markets, and that you're concerned about the location of this market and its lack of foot traffic or destinations near the parcel. So I'm wondering if you could talk about what you saw at nearby successful public markets that you all looked at, that could help us understand your concerns with this site and what a better site would look like.
Oh, sure. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. What I saw was vibrancy and foot traffic that was going on all day long from various areas. They were, and they were all in highly dense areas, which made it easy for people to frequent the markets. Sometimes, a couple times of the day, they would go there for the vendors, they would go there for entertainment, they would go there for events, and these places became a real destination. And there were generators involved in the organization of the markets that really, that made sure to bring people there. So that's what I saw. A couple of them were, one I saw in Toronto, it was, it's hard to explain, you kind of have to be there to see them. The best one I saw was in downtown Philadelphia, and it was extremely vibrant. So that's part of what I learned when I was working with a former mayor on this, what was Mayor Dave, on looking at a farmer's, excuse me, a market, a public market for Madison, which I still believe we need one. So as you know from the letter that I wrote, yes, this is a great, this would be a great city for a market, for a public market, but at a different location.
One follow-up. Susan, were you at all involved in the selection of the sites that were compared by the study another registrant mentioned?
Yeah, I was. I was involved in the way of not deciding which location, but there were, I believe there were four or five selections that were made, and then the city, the city went to those neighborhoods, and because they, they were looking at food deserts, areas where there was food deserts, and that, and to hear from the public about those spaces. And the one that, I mean, I remember this, the one that was, that was by far the highest, came with the highest recommendation was the Thorsted site on Park Street, knowing that there was a lot of development that was coming on Park Street. And from what I heard, now I heard something different tonight by somebody else, the selection at First Street was like the last on the list, so. But, you know what, the city would be able to qualify all of that, but that is my memory.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison, is it for Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Alder Madison, Susan, stick with us, we've got more questions for you.
Sure. Hello, Alder.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello, Susan. Thanks for your letter, and especially for being someone who was a leader in the downtown area and still pretty much leads downtown. I guess I just want to ask, so for example, I know your hesitation is the site location. And so can you tell me how long ago that's been since you were involved in that? Like, how many mayors ago was it?
Yeah, thank you, Sabrina. That was Mayor Dave's second term.
Okay. So that was before Soglan or after, that was before the last?
That was, that was the term right before, right before Soglan.
Thank you. And then my, the next question is, I know we've had conversations about this, and, you know, we're in a situation where sometimes backing up things would have like, just kills a project long-term. And so it is my guess, for example, where downtown lost lots of businesses due to COVID, and for some, downtown is no longer an attraction, but the bulk of us still spent a lot of our time, and I think you and I spent a lot of our time still trying to attack or attract folks to our downtown. So it is my guess, if the market went forward and it opened in a location where it's going to be at when it opens, that you and the folks that you are in community with would still support it. Like, I don't, I don't think that you're saying that if it opens, you wouldn't support it because it's in a bad location, or am I wrong?
Oh, that, that's, that's well put, Alder. Oh, I, as individually, and I certainly wouldn't not support it, because I think public markets are really good for communities. I think they bring a lot of people, they bring vibrancy, they bring people together, they become gathering places, which is what we're, you know, we're all looking for that. And then, and in this case, of course, it's a, it's a chance for smaller and especially minority-owned businesses to start their businesses, which is amazing. So, so I would never not support a public market.
Thanks, Susan.
You bet.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris, is it for Ms. Schmitz?
Yes, thank you so much. I'm just wondering, and this might be kind of an in-the-weeds question, but do you know how many locations that they went to visit, other public markets over the time period before it really, before the final site was selected?
Oh, you mean the other sites in the city?
No, for other sites, you were talking about other cities and what they're doing.
Oh, other cities. Well, that was, thanks for asking that. That was, that was over quite a few years, because in my work running DMI, we were all, I was looking at ways to improve cities and bring people together and bring vibrancy to our downtowns. And so I was fortunate, being the president of DMI, that I was able to go to International Downtown Association conferences. And they were, luckily, they were always in super cool cities, and many, many of them had public markets. So I was able to experience those public markets.
Thank you, and I just had a follow-up question. I said thank you, and I just had a follow-up question regarding foot traffic.
Sure.
Yeah, so I know that they looked at Park Street as a different location and as well as downtown. And given that the east side has grown and First Street has grown, do you think that there wouldn't be proper foot traffic now, especially with the coming of the Transit Overlay District?
Um, my, it's my personal opinion, no. I don't, I still don't think that's a good location. But it's, I don't, from what I've seen in the past from other successful public markets. What concerns me a lot is, is the foot traffic, because I don't know how that's really going to increase in that location.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Mianze, is it for Ms. Schmitz?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'll keep you in queue. Then Alder Evers, is it for Ms. Schmitz?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Susan, you mentioned Thorsted as a preferable location. What has happened to the Thorsted site? Has that been developed?
No.
Are you aware that the reason why it's not been developed is that the owner of the property is asking for the exorbitant amount of money, something like $14 million?
No, I didn't know that.
So if it's not available and... So if it's not available and the city has looked into it, is it reasonable for us to look at other locations and to move forward with the public market?
Ask that again, please, Alder. What did you say?
Well, if the Thorsted people are not willing to sell, isn't it reasonable for us to perhaps cross that off the list?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't... Alder, in my letter, I never suggested that's where it should be.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to have questions for you. So thank you very much, Susan. And Alder Miazze, who is your question for?
I guess the same question I asked earlier about the location and... Forget the guy.
You want folks from the public market or?
Yes, from the market.
From the foundation board?
You have a specific question? Location?
Well, about the foot traffic.
Sure. Actually, I can't give you numbers on foot traffic, but I know that the bus traffic and automobile traffic on that site at the corner of First Street and East Washington is probably the most heavily trafficked intersection in the community. And then with the BRT stop there as well. There's also a lot of bicycle traffic through there. There's a bike path on Mifflin Street that goes right past the market. In fact, it'll go through the market in a sense. Some other things I want to talk about, the location. I know that the city, in their wisdom, and I say this honestly, talked with the people who are developing the new Standard Building. And there was one point where the market was going to go into that building, but they could only offer us 24,000 square feet or less. And that's not nearly big enough to accomplish what we want to accomplish, nor is probably any location downtown going to offer us 45,000 square feet. We can have maybe a 20,000-square-foot facility downtown or something like that, but you're never going to be able to have the True Stage Market Ready Hall Entrepreneur Center that is also requiring another 20,000 square feet. We're at 45,000 square feet already, plus public spaces for entertainment and a place to sit and eat your meals and watch what's going on in the market. The 45,000 square feet is exactly what we need. And to do, to meet our mission, remember, our mission is economic development for individuals of color and people who don't have the assets to get a business going. If we're part of a development there where our landlords are venture capitalists, we cannot possibly have a mission to either do the Food Entrepreneur Center, True Stage Market Ready Hall, or support the vendors that we need to support. We're a nonprofit organization, will always be a nonprofit organization. The money that we earn as profit goes back into those vendors to make them successful through training and through other kinds of support that they need to make their businesses viable. And that can't happen in a for-profit model where we're paying rent to some venture capitalist as well.
Thank you.
Yep, and just, you know, if Mellie Mel could just...
Do you have a question, Alder?
Ah, yes, same question, but from a different point of view.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm coming from not just a vendor, but might be a little biased. I grew up on the Northeast Side. That area, I was riding today on our way here, just telling the air, "Just look how beautiful that is." I said, "All this, you can't just be on the outside looking in. You have to really walk it. Plenty of houses, plenty of foot traffic." The thing with here in Madison, I've found, if it's good, they're going to come. They're going to come. You could be in the middle of TruXField on the Landin' Strip. If you put a good building there with good food and good people, people come. Example, I did Taste of Madison. My first year, it rained. I said, "Vanessa, oh, my first year, is nobody going to come?" She said, "Girl, this is Madison." And everybody was out there with their umbrellas. And there was a lot of people. I was in shock. That was weather, but this location is prime to me because you have that new building, you have River's Edge, you have Tenny Park. And I was just looking at what's behind the building that's not developed. Could you see that with seating and everyone? You have Tenny Park, you have the lake, you have the stream. What is it, Yahara River running through there? You have to walk it. You can't be on the outside looking in saying, "Oh, that's not a good location because I can't see foot traffic," because you're not walking. You're not seeing the neighborhood. You're not seeing the people. That is a great neighborhood. I mean, I went to East High School and just walking through those houses, going, there used to be a shopping center over there. That kept people walking. You would see people walking, couldn't cross the street. Now it's developed. You have your, what's the coffee place? In that new building, that beautiful building and stuff all around, just growing all the way around it. What do you mean there's going to be no foot traffic? Get out and walk it. Because when you're driving, you don't see the beauty. You don't see the potential. See, I see it all. My eyes are wide open because I'm dreaming and I'm saying, "This could be this. This could be a great area." This just, I can't even explain.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder. We're now 15 questions in, and we're starting to repeat ourselves, folks, so.
We're good. We're good.
Thank you, Alder Miazze. Alder Latimer-Burris?
Oh, yes, I want to ask Ms. Jackson one more question, Mellie Mel. I need you one more time. Yes, Steve. So, and by the way, my mom was on First Street before she started Mojo Magazine, but I want to talk, I want to take people back about the struggle that you've gone through to build this business. We're going back to, I want you to go back to when you were catering with Dr. Harris, in Dr. Harris's...
Way before that, I was just doing meals out of my house.
And doing, I was going to say that.
Yeah, it was like, this isn't legal. We need to get to the public sector.
I was going to say that. That's okay. That's how it gets started.
You know, that's when Ms. Malaile came and walked me through it and held my hand and said, "This is how we do it." I went from there to a little office building. I went selling at the Genesis Building in a basement that I created a restaurant. I created it out of one kitchen. We ended up knocking out walls, building that. That was a struggle. That was, you know, trying to get that funding with no working capital, just what my grandmother left me when she died, for this reason. So this goes way back to Grandma. And, you know, just building and struggling, getting sick, having to close the restaurant. And then what am I going to do? Because I had stopped working for the district because of, well, I didn't know this was the illness that I had. So it was a struggle, you guys. It was, what do you know, what you don't know, you know? What can you do, what you can't do? Everybody who's, these vendors, these people coming up in these small businesses are going through the same thing. You got to have a business plan. How do we get that? Somebody said, "Here's one for $5,000. Here's one for $3,000." I mean, it's just things like that you go through. And I went through the whole journey. I've been doing this for 15 years. And it's, went into catering. Catering is great. But when they came to me with this dream, and I was like, "This is my final resting place. This is it. Ms. Malaile, if she was here..." And I could picture, and I drew a picture of how my station was going to have a heating, a warming station. I'm going to have a fryer in the back for that. I have that. I'm going to have a refrigerator for heat and eat just because, you know, people want to get it and go while it's cold, take it home and cook it. We have traffic from East High School, all these students walking for lunch. Me, some of those students are going to do work and learn and work for me and learn a trade. They're going to learn how to do that. This isn't just play. This is, I'm trying to build up this community to come together. And it's just, you know, so many different nationalities and people and foods and jewelries and everything. And it's okay. I'm here, but I'm not. I'm at a stop sign. I can't, you know? And it's like, oh, I'm building her up, I'm training her, I'm preparing her, you know? I have a 25-year-old granddaughter, same with her, you know, getting them ready for this. And they're like, "Well, should we start our, do something else?" No, I have hope in Madison. I have, you know, I really do. I just think something that you want really bad, you work hard for, is going to come and it's going to be something awesome. And that's what I think. But as for location, North Side and East Side seems to be the last to get something in there. North Side is just a poor little North Side. I grew up on North Side over in Lake Mendota, that area, Del Adon Way back up in there. And, you know, one of the few black families back then, you know? And we grew with our neighbors and everyone, and we would walk the lakes. You have the lakes there, just right there, you know? It's the prime location, and not just because I'm a North Sider. And there's a place across the street that could be developed all day. And so it's just, I just don't think the location, you know, like I said, it's not about the location. It's about what's happening on the inside. What we going to do on the inside? We're going to be a melting pot of a bunch of vendors all together laughing, praising, and just having a great time and making money at the same time. You know, building generational wealth, getting our children to see that, you know? I don't know what else to say. Is that enough, honey?
Thank you. Alder Harrington-Mckinney?
Yes, yes. And I think you answered it, but I want to hear it again because you just said it's about the inside. The cost of the garage doors and the windows is estimated about $6 million, if my numbers are correct.
No, Alder.
What is it? How much is it? How much is it? But anyway, what is important to you? You just gave a synopsis of the generational wealth. If I am a voter and I'm going to cast my vote and I'm going to leave off the garage doors and the windows, would you still be able to move forward with your vision the way that you described it? My question.
Well, that's not in my vision. The garage doors is something else, but the windows, where if you look at the blueprint of it and it's a beautiful and it's like out looking, people can see the joy and fun going in without the windows. You know, what I think, I don't think that would stop me because, like she said, we had that pop-up. There were no windows. Somebody opened the garage, and it was just beautiful in there. It was so crowded. People were so impressed. And so it wasn't about that. You know, if that's what you got, you lose one, you know, you got to give and take a little bit. But I'm to this point right now, I would love a window. But because I was at Genesis and I was in the basement, we had no windows. That's just a personal thing. But I would still move forward at this point because I have invested. I have invested my time, my mouth, and my energy in all of this. And it's a, you know, constant, constant. I don't know when the public market, I don't know. I don't know. You know, I'll talk to people. We're praying on it. We're thinking about it. We're talking to people. And people I talk to are ever... I mean, I might have talked to, say, 500 people. Maybe three or four has been negative. "No, this is just going to be a waste of money." You know, I hear so much negativity out of it. But they say that about everything, you know? I could go into some things, but I won't. That's going on, so thank you.
Thank you. Alder Knox for the third time? No. Thank you, Alder. All right, seeing no other questions on item 37. That is our public comment, and we will move on. Alder Vidiver? 10-minute recess, please. Alder Vidiver moves to 10-minute recess. Is there a second? Moved and seconded for a 10-minute recess. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none. We are recessed until 8:20. Thank you all very much. All right, if we can have the Alders in the room, please take their seats. And the Alders on the Zoom, please turn their cameras back on. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. And I will call the council back to order, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Martinez Rutherford, present. Alder Mayadze, present. Alder Ramon, present. Alder Slack, present. Alder Tischler is excused. Alder Revere, present. Alder Vidiver, present. Alder Weheli, present. Alder Bennett, not present. Alder Conklin, present. President Curry, present. Alder Duncan, present. Alder Everest, present. Alder Field, present. Vice President Figaro Cole, present. Alder Govendarajan, present. Alder Harrington McKinney, present. Alder Knox, present. Alder Latimer Burris, Alder Madison, present. And Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. All right. So firstly, Alder Weheli has notified me that she does, no longer has questions on item 51. So is there objection to taking up item 51 out of order? Seeing no objection. President Curry, a motion on item 51, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 51. Were there any additional questions? Seeing none. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 51? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 51 and allow our transportation staff to leave at their pleasure, unless you're here for something else. And we will go back to item two. Item two is Legisstar 79524, creating sections of the ordinances to change the zoning at 6853 McKee Road. On item two, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. On item two, are there questions for staff? Alder Weheli?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think this is conditional approval in conjunction with the urban design, but I have questions for the staff if they are available.
Who would you like to speak with? I think Director Stoudt is here. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the question I have, based on my residence, is the land use for this particular land or this site being inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And it says, you know, I went through it, and I know we talked about this, but, you know, for the sake of the explanation in term of why this was approved in February 2023, what are we approving particularly in this site? Is it the SIP? What's the difference in term of the, the conditional use?
Sure. So this evening before the council is the Planned Development Specific Implementation Plan. So that's the SIP acronym. Back in February, the council approved the Plan Development, General Development Plan, or GDP, which laid out the allowable uses for the entire property beyond just the site we're looking at this evening. And also had a variety of parameters, including that on this site, there must be at least a two-story building. And so that came up earlier this evening. But in the SIP, or Specific Movementation Plan stage, really what's before the council is the detailed design of the site and, and building. It's, it's the specific zoning for this individual property. So back in February, the council did make a decision that a funeral home would be an allowable permitted use in this individual zoning district. Tonight, really what's before you are the details. And, and yes, as you mentioned, a few of those design details are due to go back to the Urban Design Commission on November 1st for final approval.
Thank you. And the other question I have is the, the, based on the recommendation, the building should not include more than 10,000 square feet. And what we are requesting is more than 10,000 feet, I mean, 10,000 square feet. Can you, can you talk about more? Because the non-residential uses in the neighborhood mixed use typically focus on serving nearby residents through building. That includes specialty businesses, services, civics engagement, and use to attract customers from wide area. And the only exceptional that they allow to use more than 10,000 is if there were grocery stores or other use. So can you explain why we are allowing to use more than 10,000 square feet? Because I'm reading the, I have read the comprehensive plan, and that's a specific use for this particular site, and it has some specifics. So if you can talk about why there is, we allowed more land usage, if you don't mind.
Sure. So the Conference of Plan, really big picture, looks at the entire city and lays out generalized land uses for, for the whole city. Within the neighborhood mixed use areas, it, the Conference of Plan describes the typical uses within those areas. What we're dealing with on this site, it does lie within the, the mixed use area within the Conference of Plan, but it already has vested rights through the zoning that was approved back in February. The general, the Plan Development, General Development Plan allows for the placement of buildings consistent with what you see here this evening, and, and also the size of, of those buildings. And so what we're dealing with in the zoning is more specific than the language in the Conference of Plan, which is, which is quite general and, and covers the entire city.
Thank you. And finally, for me, and I don't, I don't know, Madam Mayor, if, if I can make the comment, or should I just stop the questions?
Let's see if anyone else has questions first. Are there any other questions for staff on this item? Seeing none, go ahead, Alder.
Okay, so I am one, you know, I represent District 7, and I appreciate the, this particular project, but it is not consistent with the neighborhood plan. And the reason why is it's, you know, District 7 being more residential, this is not really consistent with what the neighbors want. And I am one person who represent District 7. I'm not encouraging anyone not to vote one way or the other, but I just want to read some of the concerns that some of my residents have sent. As per, you know, the developer, you know, we had 12 to 13 comments that were sent to us. So I'm just gonna read just few to just share some of the concerns. So the plan for the adjacent land per se is apartment. A funeral home is not an ideal view for the west-facing unit, and will be difficult to rent those, you know, those apartments. A funeral home will be wasted at this lot. A restaurant, a cafe, a retail space would be more appropriate for this site. The other person said this building will only be used for a limited hours each week. What Maple Grove neighborhood needs is a restaurant for breakfast, lunches, dinners for the families. Funeral home building can be placed anywhere. The other piece the person sent is the funeral home does not fit need in District 7. Ryan's funeral home currently have another location in Verona, within few minutes away from this location. There are much better options such as apartments, restaurants, retail space that could fit well in this land to drive tax revenue for the city, along with the ever-growing need for the Madison housing needs. Will also further support the desire for those, for more restaurants and dining for the area. And finally, the traffic issues would cause more on McKee Road now having Apex and all that. So it will be more detrimental to the residents. So that's all I want to say about this particular project, and I would like to be noted as a no for, no vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing no additional discussion, is there any objection to recording, with the exception of Alder Weheli, a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote, and we will move on.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I'd like to be recorded as a no vote.
Alder Knox will be recorded as a no vote?
Thank you.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
As a no vote.
Will also be recorded as a no vote. So with three noes, that item, Alder Slack, you as well?
Yes.
With four no votes, that item will pass, and we will move on to item 29. Alder Vidiver?
I'd like to make a motion to refer this item to the next common council meeting.
Is there a second? The motion is to refer item 29 to the next council meeting. Is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, item 29 is referred to the next council meeting. And that will take us to item 37. Item 37 is Legisstar 80106, amending the 2023 adopted capital budget of the Economic Development Division and awarding Public Works Contract Number 8595 for the Madison Public Market. On item 37, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Just to be clear, the motion is to adopt the Finance Committee recommendation, which is the original item. Are there questions for staff on item 37? Alder, oh. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions for staff?
Yes, I do have a question, and I need a clarification. Would staff tell me what is the savings for the windows and the doors? I need a clarification.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Alders. Brian Cooper here from City of Madison Engineering Facilities. So the cost for the alternates, so alternate one is the garage doors, that's two garage doors, and those are $78,900 for both. And the alternate number two is a large section of windows on the south hall, and the total value of that is $268,400. So together, that's about, well, is $353,611.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Brian. Any other questions for staff? Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if my question is for economic development or finance, but I'm wondering what happens to the 11 and 1/2 million dollars of TIF money if this project doesn't move forward, and specifically after the TID closes, which I understand is scheduled in 2027.
Director Miklaijewski?
Thank you, Alder. It's actually fairly common that there are items enumerated in TID project plans that we then do not spend the money for, usually not this large of a dollar amount, but it's, it's pretty common. So what would happen is the money simply would not be spent. And what happens in the year that we close a TIF district, we first repay all of the remaining debt that's owed. And then there's usually a cash surplus that's available, and that cash surplus is then split between the taxing jurisdictions based on their percentage share of property taxes. We then, of course, would keep the TID open one extra year to collect an extra year worth of increment for affordable housing. But the, the short answer is the money would not be spent, and if there's leftover money, then it would be distributed to the jurisdictions.
Thank you. One follow-up. Could you estimate about how much money that would be for the City of Madison the year that the TID closes?
I'm looking towards Dave, who's...
The city's share of the overall levy is about 35%, so probably around $4 million or so. or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze, questions for staff?
Yes, just two questions. How much are in the TIF? Just in general, if you were to give an estimate.
How much in terms of existing debt or new potential projects?
New potential projects.
Right now, there's 11 and a half million dollars for the public market and there's a little under $50 million earmarked for South Madison.
All right. And last question, there was a question raised about what if this didn't pass tonight. I believe somebody raised that question. Can you, can you answer that question, please?
Sure, and, and obviously if, if city engineering would want to jump in as well, but we have a deadline from which we have to either execute the contract under the current bids or, or not. And this is the only council meeting that would enable that to occur. So we would not have the ability to accept those bids and enter into a construction contract if one of these versions of the resolution does not pass this evening. You know, then, then more globally, I mean, it's, it's really a sort of a staff, how, you know, we are directed in terms of, of next steps. From a practical perspective, though, you know, there are challenges related to some of the funding that's currently available for the project. The TID 36 does have an expenditure period expiration in 2027, which I realize sounds like a long time from now, but, you know, based on what the council would want us to do, we mayor may not have time to use the funding in TID 36 for whatever that future project would be. We also have the private fundraising pledges that the foundation referenced earlier this evening. Some of those pledges will expire if the project does not move forward. And we have our DOA Neighborhood Investment Fund grant that's part of the financial stack and, and that would potentially go away as well if, if we were not able to move forward expeditiously with the project.
Last question. You've been in your position for a while to see where a lot of businesses thrive in, in certain communities, different corridors. Can you just basically touch on this corridor specifically? People have talked about location-wise.
Sure. And I think it's really important to recognize that there's two major components to this facility. One is the retail public market and, and for those that have been to other public markets elsewhere around the country, you know, they're, they're familiar with that. You know, as, as noted, this evening, you, you are on a, one of the most, one of the busiest arterial streets in the city in terms of, of motor vehicle traffic, but you also have one of the greatest number of, of bus riders going by and, and that will certainly increase with bus rapid transit. You are very in close proximity of the Cap City Bike Trail. You are adjacent to existing residential development, including a brand-new building right next door where people can walk to as, as well. So you are in a location that is well-served by many modes of, of transportation. I think the other important consideration, though, is the second piece of the project, which is the entrepreneurial aspect, the, the food processing aspect of the project. And, and that is a function that doesn't have to be located in the heart of a downtown and actually, one could argue that there's reasons that it's better if it's not in the heart of a downtown. And, you know, that certainly this site is, is well-suited to support that entrepreneurial aspect of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, questions for staff?
Yes, same, same staff person. I, I think I read in one of the documents that it indicated that the TID, the TIF money was in lieu of general operating borrowing. So can you clarify that for me?
Sure. In order for the city to be able to execute a construction contract, it has to have the money approved by the common council. The common council alone cannot approve the award of TIF funding into a project. That's a joint effort on the part of the council and the TIF Joint Review Board. Given the time constraints that are before us, prior to when the contract needs to be executed, the only option that the council has is to approve general obligation borrowing for the project. And so all versions of the resolution before you this evening do just that. The, the resolution versions also though direct staff to then approach the TIF Joint Review Board at a future date to seek their permission to use TIF in lieu of that geo-borrowing. And so the thought process there is that if the city did receive affirmative support by the Joint Review Board, is that we could use those TIF dollars for the project instead of the general obligation borrowing that's approved this evening.
Okay, and, you know, I had a crash, you guys gave me a crash course in, in, in TIF. And if I recall, I thought I read something that said it cannot be used for publicly-owned facilities. Can you elaborate on that for me, please? In, in other words, the likelihood that this board would, would in fact approve the TIF funding?
Sure. So I, I should take first note that the TIF Joint Review Board has approved 11 and a half million dollars so far for this project. This was a question that was raised a long time ago, a previous mayor, previous council, previous city attorney, around whether or not TIF could be utilized for a public market facility at this location. And, and you're correct, there are items in the state statute that indicate that you can't use TIF for public facilities. And for example, you couldn't use TIF to build a, a fire station. And the city attorney's office looked into it and even though the facility is going to be owned by the city, it's going to be used for for-profit commercial activity, i.e. the, the public market. And so it's not really being used for a public purpose, it's being used to facilitate private business. And the city attorney's office opined that in this case, it would be eligible for TIP support.
Right, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask Matt, just to explain, just to reiterate why we're here and just explain that the bids came in, you know, over than expected.
Yes, I mean, that is the sole reason that we're here this evening is because we have a situation where the bids are above what we felt we could cut in terms of project costs and still have a viable project.
Thank you.
Alder Waiheleha, questions?
Yeah, thank you. That's from, from Matt. Matt, can you talk about more what you said about the pledges that will be expiring? How much are we talking about?
I mean, there, I, I can't, they're the foundation's pledges, so they're contracts between the, the donors and the foundation, so I can't speak to them in any detail, but I, I just know that if there's not a clear path to a project moving forward, those organizations that have pledged funding to the project would rightfully likely look to deploy their funding elsewhere for other projects in the community, given the number of worthwhile projects in the community today.
And if it moves forward, then that pledges will still be able to be collected, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it will expire, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue for questions, so it has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the version to alternate.
All right. Alder Rommel will move and there is a second for version two. Alder Rommel, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'm a sponsor of version two along with Alder Amani. Version two would amend the Economic Development Division's budget by 6.4 million and award the Public Works Contract to the lowest bidder. It also directs the staff to seek an amendment to TID 36 through that process that Matt was talking about and would use the $1 million in county funds if awarded for furniture, fixtures and equipment. And I chose this path because I, I'm kind of worried about like the conditions of, you know, the crazy construction market and I, I know that some Alders at least have shared concerns about borrowing and I felt, and so did Alder Amani, that this would provide the base bid of, for a viable project. And, you know, I am a big fan of the public market. I served on the committee when it was first started in 2011, along with several, at least one other person in this room. And, you know, I think I, when the, the foundation's board members spoke, you know, they spoke to how they worked with staff to figure out a viable budget to move forward in case, you know, to do value engineering and, and to try and find a viable project. So that's what I am doing. And while I think that, you know, the garage doors and windows would be great, they are part of the infrastructure of the building. So at some point, as the owner of the building, will have to take care of those when they need replacement. So it's not like an ephemeral thing that we're losing out on, we're just postponing a potential improvement to some future day. As stewards of buildings, the city must take care of them. So it's not something that I think that, you know, we're, we're kicking down, we are maybe kicking it down to a future council, but it's something that we often kick down to future councils, the care of buildings. So I think with that in mind, I will just close. Oh, I do want to thank, you know, Alder Madison and Alder Vitterver because they did take, like, they helped me decide to do this by reaching out to the county and, you know, hopefully this week we'll find out if the $1 million is awarded because I believe that money could then, as the foundation members spoke to, be used for the furniture, fixtures and equipment, which are, are those soft costs that will make a big impression and help the vendor. So I'm, you know, I'm putting this forward as an, an alternate. I think it's, it gives a viable path forward and I hope you will consider supporting it.
Thank you, Alder. I just want to clarify so everybody is 100% clear on what you're moving. Is it, is it the version two?
It's version two in Legisstar, which is the base, to pay for the base bid of 1.64 million. It does have language to then direct staff to work on using TID 36 funds to hopefully, you know, get some, some, a request for funds. And then it also would accept the county money and incorporate it into the public market's budget.
Thank you, Alder. Discussion, Alder Latimer-Burris?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So as you guys know, it is in my district, District 12, and I think that we have a chance to create a food mecca that one day, perhaps like the Manona Terrace, who you guys all know that was designed by Frank Lloyd Wright. And he knew, contrary to the council and the committees that it went through at the time, that if you build it, they will come. And in this proposal, which was passed unanimously by the Public Market Committee and in consideration and input from the Public Market Foundation, who actually would be responsible ultimately for the project and passed by the Board of Works by a strong majority. Public Works, thank you. My colleague is correcting me, thank you. So this proposal allows us to go forward and the foundation to continue to foster and cultivate private funds, which will allow the market to grow and meet future needs. Then, in the future, we will be in a position to build a local kitchen corridor, food corridor, from the market through a free kitchen and with the feed trucks, with the food trucks that feed us all the way through the north side. And yes, we will also have the opportunity to partner with the south side through the hub and the opportunity to grow local, community-based entrepreneurs like Melly Mills that went on a 15-year journey that many of us saw and were in support of. So they will be community-based entrepreneurs that will provide delicious, world-class, locally sourced food and other businesses. And in the future, much like Frank Lloyd Wright and the Manona Terrace, which took 30 years and frustrated his vision to go into the middle of the lake, but nonetheless, the Manona Terrace shortened, has become a centerpiece for downtown Madison itself and provided provision for other businesses, such as the hotels that have grown out of that and, and, and other things, I won't name them all. So we have an opportunity to create culture in Madison, much like we did with Overture Center, which, you know, went back and forth and, you know, Garber Mill, I remember looking at that building and my friend ended up going into that building and having a, a business that employed 50 people and they started out at Willie Street Co-op. And I was like, no way, this building is not going to do it. But it's not what it looked like on the outside, it's the inside. So why did Alder Rommel and I, who, Alder Rommel, you guys know, is in District Six and she borders the public market and myself, where I represent the market, reside, because it resides in my market, why did we, in essence, partner up? You know, we know a lot of the TIF money is going to come out of District Six and District 12 in TID, TIF 36, don't correct me, I'm just generalizing. So why did we do that? Why did Alder Amani and Alder Rommel partner up? So we talked in depth, including with staff, about what is best and what is realistic and what meets our current need and delved toes into this climate environment, this current environment, including climate and all the things that we're considering. Then we also considered the inflationary environment and we considered things like race and equity, equity to race and race to equity. And obviously, this program, this space underscores our commitment to racial equity, social justice, resilience, sustainability and alignment with our strategic plans. But yet, we need to ask, how do we balance things out? Because we have a responsibility right now to be fiscally responsible. So collectively, we went around and we talked to staff and we talked to, we went through the different arenas and we came to, to agreement, even that we're not exactly alike and we don't always vote alike and we don't always think alike, that this is about budgeting and about all the things that we need to do as individuals in our own house when we want something, when we want a Lexus but we can only get a Toyota or a Corolla. And that's where we're at right now. So I know the question's going to come up about, well, we've had the opportunity to have more money and they're going to keep coming back, but if we support this in its form with fiscal responsibility, that I am required to, as a Alder, to hear the constituents that are like gentlemen, that talk, that love it, but want fiscal responsibility or maybe want something grander, okay? And so what I'm trying to say is this will allow the public market to go forward, get the ground, to shovel on the ground and allow them, like Melly Mills, to grow their own business and foundation. It allows them to have more responsibility and when they do come back, they'll be able to say, okay, this is what we've done, the market's going, you know, we'll do 10 million here, et cetera, et cetera. We are empowering them to go forward after 15 years and find balance. So I'll close out, I know, can't believe I have my notes written this time. So I appreciate all of the people, I do appreciate Alder Madison and my mentor... I do appreciate Alder Madison and my mentor, Alder Vitiver, going out and, you know, advocating for that $1 million. I didn't like everything in the process, I will not comment on that, but I do appreciate this. And when I sit at home at night, I think, you can't be about business. You can't come from a family that, as you guys know, my mom's an entrepreneur, my parents come out of Black Wall Street, which if you don't know, you know 1921, they burned the city to the ground. And it was my uncle's, aunt's, grandfather's, grand, you know, my people that rebuilt it. And what they were able to do is generate generational wealth, not me, but they were able to provide for families to go on and on. And we have an opportunity to do this right now, so I'm asking for your support. And know that we have had some long conversations, Alder Rummel and I. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
Thank you, Mayor. As an entrepreneur and as somebody who's been in the food industry for, God, too many years to count or care to count, I had a lot of concerns primarily with the cost of rent for the entrepreneurs coming in. I had a lot of conversations with people and really dug into the soul of what this was. When I moved here, my best friend was part of a mobile food business, and I slung food from a, from a food cart on the Capitol and every place I could think to do it, you know? Knowing Melly Mels, knowing Madame Chu, knowing a bunch of the entrepreneurs, my concern was for their rents, talking to them, because those rents look really high. But talking to people that were part of the public market, a lot of those fears were laid by their approach to on-ramp entrepreneurs and really sow into their development and give them the tools to be successful. Also, coming from a mobile entrepreneur food business, I was thinking about this winters that we were not able to go to Library Mall, we were not able to come up to Capitol Square, we were not able to go to any of the regular vending places. The public market will give mobile food vendors an opportunity to vend throughout a very long winter. I still have some concerns, but I believe that the dedication of all of the vendors involved and the staff that will be assisting them, I believe that they can make something of this. I do support the second version, and I'm excited to see what we can do, not in a Milwaukee way, not in a Philadelphia way, not in a, in a Portland way, but in a Madison way. Thank you. I wasn't funny at all.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitiver.
So certainly, my preference is for the larger version, but also because, as Alder Rummel said, that it would be a bit of kicking the can down the road, because again, we will be, the city will be responsible for the building, and we know those doors and windows will need to be replaced. And the 356,000 that was cited as the cost of them today will likely be something like 600,000 or 800,000 when it comes time to need to replace them. Nonetheless, I am absolutely willing to compromise because I am so deeply committed to this project coming to the fore. It is right for our economic interests, it is right for our commitment to success for our diverse constituents, and is right for our community. So I really urge my voter, my voters, my colleagues to vote for this. Given that we need a 15-vote majority, I am absolutely willing to compromise and support the Second Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just to echo Alder Vitiver's point about compromise, it's just really, I think for us, especially going to the county, as a Black woman who spends the bulk of my day working for Black women, I've always used myself and put myself in a position to go for all of it, because we too often get the minimal, like just very small crumbs. And so our, going to the county to get the $1 million, it did pass Finance Committee unanimously, we feel good about it. It comes up on their board, I think on Thursday night. And so at the end of the day, for us, it's about opening up a market, getting Carmel, folks like Carmel, for example, pass the stop sign. But I just want to say a couple of things. So as usual, I always start with the city's mission. It is to provide the highest quality service for the common good of our residents and visitors. And there's also a value statement about prosperity, shared prosperity. We are dedicated to creating a community where we are all able to achieve economic success and social mobility. And so most of us, hopefully, have already dug into the Race to Equity 10-year update. But if you did not, here are a couple of updates. So some themes that came from the initial baseline, baseline report updated, you know, in this 10-year update. It says, "These profound and persistent disparities created a racialized poverty and economic disadvantage for Dane County's Black residents despite professional success and financial security." It goes on to note, "For Dane County, continued marginalization of communities of color undermines the region's cultural vitality, economic competitiveness, and overall quality of life in a role that increasingly valued and demanded racial and ethnic diversity and inclusion." Then it attributes these findings to several factors and forces. "A mismatched labor market oriented to advanced, degreed, heavily credentialed, and well-networked job seekers, leaving a substantial portion of Black residents with fewer pathways to quality jobs. Dane County and Madison needed to respond more effectively, inclusively, and accountably to this growing racial equity challenge by evaluating and addressing underrepresentation of people of color in Dane County workforce, especially in management-level positions." Other themes from the 10-year report includes improvements in economic well-being, but a lack of shared prosperity. So Dane County is currently the fastest-growing county in the state, but unfortunately, Black and low-wage earning residents are not experiencing the shared prosperity that working, paying taxes, and being an asset to the community and the workforce should afford them. Even despite improvements in wages, Black residents at all income levels, including those earning low incomes, are more severely affected by the lack of shared prosperity than their white counterparts. This disadvantage is certainly racialized, but less obviously. There are also gender disadvantages which affect Black women and girls, Black boys and men, and Black gender nonconforming residents differently. And this cost of lack, this lack of shared prosperity has come at a cost for the entire county and state, not just Black residents. And so then, I just want to make a couple more points. So again, as folks have shared with us, the public market will be an economic driver within the communities that it'll serve. Madison will create, or just I think the region itself will create a $20 million-plus annual economic impact that will reach across the region. Back to the Race to Equity Report, it suggests that anti-Blackness and racism will continue to undermine the county's cultural vitality, blah, 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 blah. And I will, I really encourage you to think about the market as a response to what the report is asking us to do and the recommendations in its report. So I served on the Market Ready of Program Advisory Committee, so I was able to witness firsthand how strategic investment, the market is a strategic investment in equity through entrepreneurship works well in Madison. The city and the foundation continue to cultivate a diverse pool of businesses, as witnessed by their testimony earlier today. And currently, again, to reiterate, over 200 businesses have shared their detailed interest into the market. And to bring in, we always talk about generating revenue for the city, generating visitors for the city. It is estimated that 500,000-plus visitors each year will come into this and experience this market. The other thing I wanted to note is that supporting affordable housing and the Madison public market is not a zero-sum funding choice. Both issues are synergistic strategies and a holistic approach to supporting communities of struggle in Madison. The market is an economic opportunity for folks in our community with ideas and talent to monetize those ideas and increase their economic mobility, while affordable housing offers stable shelter opportunities to members of our community who need it most. The public market and affordable housing are size of the same coin, and with regards to uplifting and empowering members of our community in need, and both should be supported. Again, I think the market will create jobs, especially in recent news where we're saying young people need more jobs, lots of kids go to East High School, which is in walking distance from this market, their jobs. So I just want to bring you back to our shared prosperity. We're dedicated to creating a community where all of us are able to achieve economic success and social mobility. And something was mentioned early about relitigating these things. And what I have seen in my work and in the spaces that I get to sit in, I get to see over and over and over again, when things benefit, especially benefit folks of color or low-income folks, such as South Madison, we relitigate, we create committees, we create work groups, and we pass it on, pass it on, pass it on, pass it on, until we're 20 years later and we just about to maybe get past a stop sign. So we do it over and over and over again. I'm really asking us not to do that again, not to create the other committee to go look at a development plan that doesn't exist to be on top of the building, for example. Let's just get past a stop sign. That's what I'm asking for.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm speaking as one who was not originally convinced that this was a good idea. I'm speaking as one who looked at this site and wasn't crazy about it at first. But look at the way Madison has changed and look at the way Madison is growing. Look at the Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan and all the development that's going in there. Look at the possibility of a multimodal transportation hub and Amtrak all coming through the East Side. As the city grows and changes, foot traffic is going to be quite a thing in this area. But it's not just foot traffic that's going to make this work. Now, I know that Olbrich Gardens is smaller, it's not 45,000 square feet, but it's a destination. And whenever I throw to go there, parking is challenging. So you build this, people from all over the city, in fact, people from other cities and other communities will be coming to visit and to frequent Madison's public market. How many of you have been to the Milwaukee Public Market? Did you walk there? Did you go to the city with an idea? I'm going to see the public market. And you probably had to drive there. You might have gone to the art museum and to the public market, and it wasn't convenient to walk in between. As the city grows, we can accommodate this, we can do this. We have a food corridor in this direction anyways, as the Alder mentioned, with Feed Kitchen and with the other developments that are taking place. Alder Vitiver and I, sitting on the Madison Food Policy Council, were well aware of the strategic importance of this for the future, for this food corridor. I encourage all my Alders to fall in line, all my colleagues, all my Alders, all of you, all my friends, all my brothers and sisters here on this common council, and for the good of the city, move forward with this. Let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion is version two. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? There is objection, we'll have a roll call. So the motion before us is version two. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, I'll remind you, it's a 15-vote item, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Martinez-Rutherford? Aye. Alder Meadzi? Aye. Alder Rummel?
Aye.
Alder Slack?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Alder Vitiver?
Aye.
Alder Weheli?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. President Curry?
No.
No. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Field?
No.
Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Govendorajin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington-McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Knox?
Pass.
Alder Latimer-Burris?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Aye. And just to confirm, Alder Knox?
Uh, no.
No.
Madam Mayor, I have 15 ayes and 3 noes.
The vote is 15 ayes and 3 noes. Alder Harrington-McKinney?
Madam Mayor, I have a question. I second the Second Amendment. Is it, would it be in order if I allowed Alder Latimer-Burris to do that second? Am I out of order?
Uh, no, the clerk can change that record. Yeah, thank you, Alder. All right, with 15 ayes, that item passes. And we'll move on to item 46. Item 46 is Legisstar 79532, repealing sections of the Mass and General Ordinances. It's a very unspecified title. President Curry, a motion please on item 46.
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 46. We are just about at quorum, folks. Please do not leave the room. It is moved and seconded. Are there questions for staff on item 46? Alder Weheli?
Yeah, if staff can talk about the changes, that would be great.
I think that's probably the city attorney.
Yes. Thank you.
Sure. This ordinance would repeal the current panhandling ordinance, which is unenforceable. It has been unenforceable since a decision of the U.S. Supreme Court in 2015. It has not been enforced since that time. And so you could view this simply as cleanup, because it's not an ordinance we are enforcing. As I've discussed with some of the Alders, there is a separate ordinance that is in effect, which restricts standing at certain intersections identified in the city, throughout the city. That was, that ordinance was developed after the Supreme Court decision, after some thorough study between our office and traffic engineering to identify intersections that the city could justify restricting people from being, from standing at those intersections and medians for public health and safety. That applies whether the person is attempting to ask for money or any other activity. It's not based specifically on panhandling. But this proposed ordinance would simply repeal the current panhandling ordinance, which, as I said, cannot be enforced at this time.
Thank you. Are there further questions for staff? Alder, we don't hear you for some reason. That's better?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. For the attorney, so were you referencing the medium safety ordinance? Do we have another ordinance that would cover?
Correct.
Okay.
It is in Chapter 12.
12, yeah, okay. One of my questions, additional questions, would be that, so is the, is the intent is to repeal the whole ordinance? Panhandling ordinance? Or portions of it?
No, the entire panhandling ordinance and...
Entire ordinance.
Right. And the penalty that goes along with that ordinance.
Okay. All right, I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue wishing to ask questions. It has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? No discussion. It's been moved and seconded. Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 46. And that brings us to the end of the agenda. Are there any additional introductions from the floor or any announcements? If not, Alder Martinez-Rutherford, it's your turn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.